All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. This is the regular city council meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2024. And I'm calling the meeting to order. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. City Clerk, if we could do roll call, please.
Counselor Kathy Downer.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
And can we get a motion to excuse Mayor Janice due to travel?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you so much. Any objections? Seeing none, Mayor Janice is excused. And I'm sure everybody's gotten a chance to see the final agenda. Can I get a motion to approve? Oh, yes.
This is Deputy Mayor. I move that we take the council minutes off of the public consent agenda and put it on General Business 9C. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Excellent. Any objections? Hearing none, we are moving forward with the amended agenda.
I just wanted to stop and say that they need more chairs out in the lobby.
We don't have any more chairs at this time.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, folks.
I do, I apologize that we don't have enough chairs. Moving on to the ceremonial, our Human Rights Week proclamation. Just pull it out here. I motion to recess for five minutes. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any objections? Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry about that. Thank you for staff and council to help everybody find a seat. Where was I? Oh, the proclamation. All righty, so the Human Rights Week proclamation, here we go. Whereas, in the wake of the Holocaust and World War II, the United States joined other countries around the world to form the United Nations. Sorry. And whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights was drafted by representatives of different legal and cultural backgrounds from all regions of the world and adopted by the United Nations General Assembly in Paris on December 10, 1948. And whereas, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights set out for the first time fundamental human rights to be universally protected as a common standard of achievement for all peoples and all nations. And whereas, the theme for 2024, "Our Rights, Our Future Right Now", is a call to acknowledge the importance and relevance of human rights in our everyday lives. And whereas, during this Human Rights Week, we focus on how human rights are a pathway to solutions, playing a critical role as a preventative, protective, and transformative force for good. As United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres said, many rights, or sorry, said, "Human rights are the foundation for peace, peaceful, just, and inclusive societies." Now therefore, I, Rachel Anderson, Deputy Mayor of the City of Squim and on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim and celebrate December 9th through December 16th, 2024, as Human Rights Week, affirming our commitment to uphold the equal and inalienable rights of all. We urge citizens to change perceptions by speaking up against hate speech, correcting misinformation, and countering disinformation. This is the time to mobilize action to reinvigorate a global movement for human rights. Signed on this ninth day of December 2024, Rachel Anderson. And I will sign this real quick. And I would like to thank Vicki for putting it together. Thank you. All right, we will move on to public comment. This is a limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. This is not a forum for hate speech. The City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. Speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The City of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind.
The City of Squim has implemented a new procedure for remote public comments during city council meetings. All community members who wish to participate in remote public comment via Zoom or by phone are required to register on the city's website by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The new registration process is designed to streamline and enhance the public comment experience for everyone. For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. No one has signed up for remote public comment. Each person will have, in person, will have three minutes to speak on any topic, and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes will be permitted for public comment. Please state your name if you are representing an organization in your city of residence. And Mary Bell.
Come in and thank everybody who helped decorate our town. It's the most purist place I've seen in a long time, and I really would like to know where that tree came from. I've never seen anything so amazing, so it's a joy to be here.
And Doug Wright.
I don't know you locked that door. Thank you. All right, Doug Wright, Hendrickson Community of Squim. I realize our mayor is not here tonight, but I would like to express, I think, for many people here that Brandon and his family are in our prayers, and we wish him the best and hope they get home safe and sound soon. I want to make a bit of an announcement. If it is improper, please tell me. I will shut up. Now, next Saturday, or this coming Saturday, the 14th, there will be a presentation and discussion on the MHP zoning overlay, rent stabilization, RCWs, and a few other topics or whatever, and it will be at the KSQM Community Room, KSQM radio station, if you don't know. It is in the old JCPenney Shopping Center in the back left corner. We will do this again on Sunday at noon. So Saturday at noon, Sunday at noon. And keep in mind that we are restricted to a certain capacity by the Fire Marshal. If we hit that capacity, we will have to shut the doors. That's why we're doing it two consecutive days. Hopefully, you can get in and get all your questions answered. Like I really know what I'm talking about, right? We will try and we'll share information. Everybody can ask, you know, present information, whatever. It's kind of a, an open discussion presentation. Sometimes you can't see screens here as well as what we're going to have for you, so... Nothing against your screens now, but you know, sometimes you need to shut the lights off. All right, thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you to those who spoke. We will move on to the public hearing. The citywide zoning and zoning map amendment for manufactured home parks. The public hearing and second touch. Before we begin the public hearing, the clerk will read the comment instructions.
If you are in person and would like to provide public comment, please sign in on the public hearing sign-in sheet. In-person comments will be alternated with confirmed registered remote comments, but we don't have anyone signed up for remote public comment for the public hearing. Comments are limited to three minutes. There will be a timer visible on the screen. Please avoid comments not related to the subject of the hearing. Participants will be disconnected after speaking.
Thank you, City Clerk. The subject of this public hearing is the citywide zoning text and zoning map amendment for manufactured home parks. The public hearing is now open. Does the city manager or staff have any testimony to present?
Thank you, counsel. Our Director of Community and Economic Development is remote this evening, but is prepared to give some opening statements. So if the clerk can allow her to join us remotely.
Thank you, Mr.
She is on the big screen. Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you, Mr. Huish. Lindsey Zemel, Community and Economic Development Director for the City of Squim. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Anderson and counsel. Tonight, I have a very brief presentation to go over the materials for public hearing this evening, and staff will be available for any questions after the hearing as well. So a little history on the topic. The City of Squim has historically recognized that manufactured mobile home parks have been an affordable housing typology for city residents for many years. In 2023, some residents requested city council and staff look into the development of measures that could protect the existing manufactured mobile home parks that are legally established within the city limits of Squim. In August of 2024, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and completed a formal recommendation on the amendments that are here in front of you this evening. And I will go into a brief overview on that. In the interim of the Planning Commission working on the edits... Sorry, I'm having mouse issues. The city council adopted some moratoriums on the redevelopment of mobile home manufactured parks. The existing Interim Control Ordinance 2024-028 is set to expire on January 22nd of 2025. The Planning Commission made recommendations to establish a citywide zoning map overlay on existing manufactured mobile home parks that are not currently owned by their tenants. They recommended zoning code language to adopt a new chapter of code under Squim Municipal Code 1863. This effectively implements the new zoning overlay. Furthermore, they're adding a new, adding the new zoning overlay of 1816 and retaining the existing uses and development standards in 1862. Finally, we're doing some cleanup and moving definitions that were in 1862 to the definition section of 1808, all in the Squim Municipal Code. Staff reviewed the current comprehensive plan and found supportive goals and policies under the housing and land use element to support the recommendation of the Planning Commission. This includes land use element goal 3.3 and associated policy 3.33. In addition, it includes land use element goal 3.4 and its associated policy 3.42. Under the housing element goals 6.1 and its policy 6.11, goal 6.2, addressing affordable housing, and policy 6.21, and goal 6.4, identifying adequate shelter for all citizens, and policy 6.42 and 6.43. Staff has provided the 60-day notice of intent to adopt to the Washington State Department of Commerce with these draft legislative markups, and that was provided on June 13th, 2024. In addition, we adopted an existing Shoreline State Environmental Policy Act, existing environmental documents, and that was completed on October 8th of 2024. The Planning Commission found that the proposal met the criteria for approval and has forwarded their full recommendation to city council tonight. In the ordinance for this evening, it was noted that there were, at our first reading, there was Scrivener errors on the map. I do want to note that those maps have been corrected to include the other park off of Hendrickson. With that, there is a criteria for approval listed in the Squim Municipal Code for type III amendments, including citywide rezones. Staff has provided the counselor analysis on all eight of those criteria in your materials tonight. In addition, the public hearing and second touch was noticed as utilizing the optional notice method, and city staff, the week of Thanksgiving, sent out approximately 500 additional notices to all owners of the existing mobile or manufactured homes within the parks under consideration tonight. With that, staff is available for any questions. Otherwise, I recommend you open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you so much, Lindsey. Are there any questions from council? No, we are raring to go. All right, we will now move on to public comment.
All right, as previously noted, there are no remote, no one signed up for a remote public comment. Our first person for in tonight is Mike East.
And I will also read the rules for public comment. I forgot to do that. This is a public hearing. All audience members wishing to make comments will be allotted three minutes to speak. When it is your time to speak, please give your name. And whether you reside within the city limits of Squim, please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The City of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values.
Good evening. My name is Mike East. I live at 711 West Heritage Loop in Squim, which is one of the manufactured home parks being considered tonight. And I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see this process take place. I was on the City Planning Commission here for years, years ago. And, you know, we've been considering that at that time, but it's good to see it being done now. So, thank you very much.
Dawn and Linda Disinger?
I'm Linda Disinger. This is my magician's assistant. Okay, that's, it's my husband. I'm here to say that after 18 years of wanting to be here, wanting to come back, we finally decided that we could do that. However, the prices of what we could get for our home in Pennsylvania and the prices of a home in Squim were vastly different. So we moved into a mobile home that we then bought low, but then discovered it needed a lot of help. So we put about $40,000 into making it a home that will last hopefully as long as us and maybe longer. To find out that this could be just sold out from under us was a shock. We actually bought the home long distance, and we didn't actually see a real lease until after we'd moved in and started things going. If you own your own home, you own the land that's on it. You take care of your home, you take care of the land. If you rent, your landlord takes care of anything that you supposedly need in your home. We take care of our homes, and we are solely responsible for that. And it seems really unfair that there would be even a thought of a possibility that somebody could sell that land out from under us that we lease. And I think the lease is a little high, considering what it covers. But again, I'm just grateful to be here, and I'm very, very thankful that I came at a time when this was getting taken care of, because it shocked me. I mean, that's putting it mildly. So anyhow, thank you.
Annette Hansen?
Thank you. My name is Annette Hansen, and I live at 727 West Heritage Loop here in Squim. And I'm retired from Squim School District. And I've lived here 50 years. And I just want to address and thank Deputy Mayor Anderson and the city council and staff for taking the last couple of years to look seriously at this issue since about the times that the rents really started escalating on the rental of lands. And when I first moved in, my rent was $295 a month for the land I have my home on. And starting this last month, my rent was $545. And that's within a four-year period. And I just want to thank you for working on this first effort. About the only thing really right now that the city could do within their power is to work on this zone overlay, to at least protect the land from being sold out from under all the owners who do rent their land, but may totally own their own homes. And I just encourage you, in addition to supporting this effort and voting yes on this zone overlay, I encourage you to work with our legislators, who may attempt again to get a, some type of rent cap protection on renters like us and other renters in our state, because there's no protection right now. And it went through the House Subcommittee last year, last spring, but it never got through the Senate Committee. But we have supportive legislators, and if there's anything you can do to encourage them or encourage the governor to work on this, to get it pushed through, that would be very much appreciated. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Dale Jarvis?
Hello there. My name is Dale Jarvis. I live at 143 Lakeview Drive. I am here today because I support the work that you're doing in the legislation, and I hope that that gets passed today. But more importantly, I'm looking out at the audience, and I'm wondering if there's anybody in the audience who also supports this work that's being done. And if you would, would you please raise your hand? Thank you. Thank you.
And Doug Wright.
Doug Wright, Hendrickson, again. I'm back. This is easy. Thank you. Each one of you, staff, Planning Commission, counselors, it's been a long trip together, hasn't it? We made it. Hot diggity. Thank you. It takes the support of everyone. Simple. Thank you. Fantastic.
And that concludes public comment.
All right, I will now close the public comment portion of the hearing. Thank you to everyone who provided public comment. Is there any council discussion?
I noticed that there's the statement in here from Brandon that I was wondering if you'd like to read.
Yes, I was waiting to see if any council had other questions or comments, and then I would read it.
I just appreciate the city administration and the Development Department, because this was a long time coming, but this is how the process worked, and it's proof that the process works. We just have to be patient. Thank you very much.
All right, and Brandon, because he couldn't be here tonight, sorry, Mayor Janice, because he couldn't be here tonight, he did send in a statement that he wanted, wanted it to be read. Let me pull it up here. All right. "To everyone attending today, whether in person or virtually, I want to express my sincere apologies for not being able to join you in person. A medical appointment for our child in Seattle has required my attention, but I did not want to miss this opportunity to address such an important topic. The issue of mobile home park zoning is vital, not just to those present today, but to all members of our community, including those who couldn't be here. This is why I feel it's important to share my thoughts. First and foremost, I want to recognize and commend the incredible collaboration that has brought us to this point. I'm deeply proud of the city staff, council members, Planning Commission, and community advocates who have come together to address this critical issue with the focus and dedication it deserves. City staff deserve special thanks for their attentiveness and willingness..." City staff deserve special thanks for their attentiveness and willingness to work hand in hand with the council and community members to shape an ordinance that reflects the needs and voices of those it impacts most. Your flexibility and commitment have been instrumental in making this process meaningful and inclusive. And to the members of our community, your unwavering dedication and tireless advocacy have been the driving force behind this effort. To those who packed the council chambers, meeting after meeting, sent emails, made phone calls, and delivered heartfelt, heartfelt public comments, thank you. You've shown what true civic engagement looks like. You held us as council members accountable, and you ensured that we never lost sight of who we are to, who we are here to serve. Your efforts didn't just push this issue to the forefront, they reminded all of us of the power of collective action and the importance of listening to the voices of those we represent. Tonight's discussion and the motion before us, soon to be motion before us, mark just the first step in what I hope will be an ongoing effort to address housing challenges in Squim. While this motion focuses on mobile home park zoning, your advocacy extends far beyond this issue. It highlights the broader housing needs and burdens that so many in our community face. I truly believe that this effort will set the tone for future housing initiatives, ensuring that Squim remains a place where everyone can find a home. While I'm unable to vote in this meeting due to my absence, if I could, my vote would be an enthusiastic yes for this motion, which I believe aligns with the wishes of the community and represents a positive step forward. Thank you again to everyone attending today, both in person and online, for your continued dedication and commitment to making Squim a better place for all. Your hard work and determination inspire me, and I am grateful to be part of this process with you. Sincerely, Mayor Brandon Janice." All right, and I'll ask one more time. Any council discussion? Okay. The public hearing is now closed, and we will move on to council action. Are we ready to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make the motion unless somebody else wants the honor. It's worked on it longer. But I was working on this on the planning commission, so I'm happy to do that, too.
Excuse me, Counselor Butler, is your mic on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 2024 hyphen as presented and recommended by the Planning Commission and Department of Community and Economic Development, adopting the staff analysis and findings effect.
I second that motion.
And City Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
And Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you so much. And I motion to have a five-minute recess, just to give people some time to leave if they would like to. All right. We are moving on to our consent agenda with the exception of 8B, which has been moved to 10C as amended. Uh, sorry, moved to 9C, thank you. City Clerk, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Claim vouchers totaling $1,475,208.39. Pioneer Memorial Power Pathway Accessible to All, a letter of support. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Minutes and Grants. Curb-Ramp Replacement Agreement with the Transportation Improvement Board. Union Agreement between the City of Squim and the Non-Uniform Employee Group. Storm Water Project Funding Agreement with the Department of Ecology. Civic Center Renovation Contract Amendment. Purchase of Rittenhouse Permanent Utility Easement, a resolution. And purchase of police vehicles.
Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda,
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I second that.
Are there any objections? Seeing none, consent agenda approval has passed, and we will move on to general business. SMC 3.78 Guarantees and Bonds for Land Use and Public Improvements Code Amendment First Touch. And this is from Lindsay, our Community and Economic Development Director. I think I got that right.
Nice introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Anderson. Yes, Lindsay here, same department, it's a different topic. So, this evening, we have in front of you a first touch on Squim Municipal Code 3.78, which pertains to the bonds for land use and public improvements. As we were preparing to, staff identified as we were preparing some bonding documents for a minor code amendment. Currently, SMC 3.78 requires the Administrative Services Director, now known as the Finance Director, to accept and sign off on all bond agreements and releases. However, this task is only required to be handled by the Finance Director if it is a cash surety bond that is posted, which happens very rarely. Most bonds are posted, a cash bond is posted. Most bonds are posted in the form of a surety, providing a business specializing in such instruments, and there's no need to account for actual funds. The proposed changes to SMC 378060 specify the circumstances under which the Finance Director is still involved in bond agreements. In all other circumstances, it provides for the Public Works Director or City Engineer and/or the Director of Community and Economic Development to prepare bonding agreements, review, accept, and sign off on the performance and maintenance bonds that are required for public and private infrastructure improvements through the site planning process. Staff recommends that the council direct me and/or Paul to return with a proposed ordinance at the next meeting.
Any questions from council? None. All right.
It's very straightforward.
Right. Thank you for all the background and the cover sheet, Lindsay. All right, well, if there's no questions, can I get a motion to approve? Or, sorry, get a motion, sorry.
I move to waive the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda for the next available meeting.
And City Clerk, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Downer?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Lowe?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Rutter?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion passed six zero.
Thank you so much. And moving on to the next one, which is also Lindsay. So I guess I'll introduce it with, it's not so much a question about a retreat like we had last year. It's more about connecting our council priorities to the comp plan. So, I didn't know if the city manager or Lindsay wants to take it away?
Well, I think Lindsay can give you the details. She really is the one that recommended it to SMT, and so I thank her for her insights. But just for context, I think it's just a summary of what you've already said. When, as we were looking at the 25 calendar and knowing that it's a kind of an annual practice for council to have a retreat, but it's the same council, and you made eight of those, and nope, none of you have changed, well, how could we make best use of your time in a retreat setting? And we were thinking about how to, different variations or options, and Lindsay came up during our senior management team meeting to say, oh, you know what, we're in the middle of the comp plan, a lot of their priorities that they had addressed really have to do with the comp plan that we're in the middle of, and we need their input, so we could easily use our same consultants to help guide us, you know, they could participate in that conversation in a retreat setting. So it's just connecting your priorities from last year. I doubt that you want to change them because you kind of just made them. And, and, and trying to take it to the next level through the very extensive and expensive comp plan update that we're in. So that's the background. Lindsay can tell you why and how it fits in, so I think I'll just defer to her, but that's kind of the background. So, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Lindsay?
Mr. Huish gave a great summary. So, we are looking at specifically some of the, out of the eight priorities the council has identified, it's, you know, the comprehensive plan will address infrastructure, workforce housing, affordable housing, the comp plan itself, identifying our strengths, and ensuring citizen engagement and quality partnerships with our regional partners and other service providers, climate change, and also workforce housing and recruitment again, and the economic side of things. So, I have discussed with my consultant, SCJ Alliance, if he thought that this would also be a good utilization of the council's time to really dive deeply into what a major comprehensive plan update is. I know that many of you, this is your first time sitting at the dais in this role for this. We would recommend that a retreat sometime between mid-February and mid-March would best serve the process of the comprehensive planning draft as it prepares to go to Planning Commission, as well as giving you guys some draft ideas and materials that have been drafted to consider and chew on and see if those approaches meet the intent of your priorities. So, with that, we do believe that anywhere from two and a half to four hours would be sufficient if the comprehensive plan and the integration between council priorities and that was the one topic on the agenda. So, this is, it was intended to be a council discussion and got moved up to general business, so create a council packet and give a little background for you, but I'd love to hear your discussion on this.
Any comments or questions? I'll save mine for after everybody's finished. Yeah.
I think it's a good idea. I'd really like to see the work that we put into priorities connected to the comprehensive plan update.
I'll, I'll second and third that.
All right, so first, when we, when it was mentioned at the agenda planning meeting, the, I was a little apprehensive because my thought process was like, well, if the comp plan is like a 10-year document, what if this council is only here for the next four years, and the next council ends up having this concrete document? I mean, it could be amended, sure, but that's also a very troublesome process. But then I thought about it some more and thought, you know, I really don't see affordable housing not being a problem in the next few council cycles, I would, I would predict. So I am very excited about bridging the council priorities to the comp plan and really having everything solidified so that we can take full advantage of any funding, of any connections, of anything that could possibly help us address these issues. And so with that being said, I imagine staff could put together like a schedule of when a meeting would work best. And I believe Lindsay said anytime between mid-February to mid-March is the goal to make that happen.
Yeah, last year, we surveyed you a couple different times to try to get the majority that, you know, overlap between all of your availabilities and whatnot, and what you saw as important in that, the time of day, the day, the hour, food, et cetera. So, I think the agenda will be driven by Lindsay and the SCJ. They, they will know how to best leverage their time with you, but we can work on the other details, logistics of where and when, and, and those things through a survey.
All right, thank you so much. It sounds like all of council is very supportive of it, and we look forward to working with Lindsay on this and the consultant on this. Any other questions or comments from council or Lindsay?
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to 9C. Kathy?
I noticed something about our minutes when I was reading them. I know that the minutes of a council meeting should reflect the action taken and not maybe so much as what we said, but there was, we had a very animated discussion at the end of the last meeting, and there's no reflection of it at all in the minutes. And I just noticed this like yesterday or whenever I was preparing my agenda. So I think, and I didn't know if it was by accident or if it was done deliberately, and I'm not sure if Counselor Rutter noticed or how she felt about the comments not being
I'd say that no action was taken and no, um, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I, I would say that, that I think that these minutes were prepared in the standard, in this, with the standard protocol that is always used for these issues. Thank you, thank you for your question, but I'm...
You're happy with it, even though it's not paraphrased or in writing or anything?
Um, yeah, because I, yeah, I brought it up very ad hoc without, I didn't, I didn't learn about it with enough time in order to go through the official process and have it officially on the agenda and everything, and especially because no official mode or action came of that discussion. So, thank, I appreciate your, you bringing this up, Kathy. I was wondering what your thoughts were going to be on the last minute.
Why I brought it up.
Yeah, I was, I was very intrigued. I was like, oh, what's in there? But, um, no, because there weren't, or was no motion or no actions taken, um, thank you. I appreciate the, you bringing it up and the concern. I'm going to leave it there. I have more to say on that, but I'm going to leave it right there.
Okay. I do want to say, though, to the new people, anytime you want something entered into the record, you should have a right to enter it into the record. Another counselor pointed out that you wanted to use the phrase "we" the Squim City Council, but that could have been skipped, and then the rest of your message could have been read into the record. So just keep that in mind for the future. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does.
As a council, you have the right to do that. And I didn't pick up on it at the moment, the, the person running the meeting didn't pick up on it. Nobody else did either, so.
It was, uh, thank you, thank you. A lot, a big learning opportunity for me, and I hope that, that, that particular item, we can bring it forth, bring it back in a, in a more meaningful way, in a more prepared way going forward. But yes, I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Kathy. I really appreciate this discussion, and the intent with your discussion is to educate myself and the other counselors on what we do have the ability to do as counselors in our official capacity. But, so, thank you, but, um, no, I, I don't feel a need for that, that discussion to be marked in the minutes, especially because, A, I didn't have it prepared with enough time in advance, and B, we, no action came of it. So, thank you, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other comment before we move on?
If I may?
Yes.
Pardon me. That was an oversight on my part, so I have typewritten notes. So I, it is part of the record, it should be noted, even though no action came of it, even though there was, you didn't have it as an agenda item, it was still a topic of discussion, and I think it should be reflected in the minutes, so I am happy to adjust the minutes and push them out again.
All right, so we'll see them the first meeting of January, probably?
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks so much. All right, moving on to reports, youth liaison report. Leila and Lincoln. Leila and Lincoln.
Hello, city council members. I hope you are all well today. First things first on our report is, winter break begins after the 20th of this month. Our high school winter wishes program raised just over $7,000. And a report from our school board, they passed the bond request to be voted upon by the citizens to rebuild the high school and Helen Howard Elementary. Leila?
I have, the senior play additions were today, and Knowledge Bowl's first tournament is this Thursday, so they'll be gone all day from like eight to four. And then this weekend was the seniors, senior breakfast at Boys and Girls Club, which was really successful. We had a lot of people come out, and it was very joyful, and we had the choir come sing, and so, yeah, it's lots of fun.
Are you guys looking forward to winter break?
Oh, my goodness. I love my school and I love education, but yes.
I'm not going to say all that. I'm just going to say yes, very much.
Thank you for your report, guys. Up next, City Manager Report.
Thank you, council. You all should have received that in your inbox. I keep trying to get it to you early and earlier, and it's just Monday morning logistics. I do have four things on there I'd like to visit with you about or just share a little more detail than what's in the report, but before I do that, I'm also, part of the report and a separate email was, had to do with our new IT Director. He's here tonight. I think I told you in the email I wanted to introduce him to you. I think you've probably seen him tonight, but I'd like to give him a couple of minutes at the podium just to introduce himself to you. Oleg?
No pressure.
Well, I know how to turn mic, apparently. My name is Oleg. I'm an IT professional. I've worked in IT industry probably for more than 20 years. For the past 20 years, it was in US, in Europe, in Asia. I worked with many different teams on many different projects. If you look at my resume, you probably noticed a lot of technical and business certification. That's for a reason, I believe, that you have to learn and not just have a degree, but be kind of there, understand what's the industry does currently. I speak five languages, not because I learned them, just because I lived around and kind of picked it up. What else? I'm really happy actually to be here. I know that city management actually chose me, but it's a mutual feeling. Actually, I chose the city too. It was not love from the first sight, but it grew on me. So, so it's something that, it's interesting. I didn't know how to pronounce Squim first. It was Squim first, but I learned really quickly about, you know, interesting history of the city. Yes, I experienced Blue Hole too, so I know it's there, and I'm really happy to be here because it's a wonderful team. I understand that you went through the process, and for me, it took five minutes, five months, I think, for you two, so it was a long process. I didn't have to start in December, but I felt like it's very important to be early to make sure that when the, it's a little bit downtime, to learn about the systems, computer system, learn the people, the names, put the names with the faces, and be ready for January. So that's my plan, to learn about the city, to learn about the things, how it could be value-added, and see if I could be more helpful to run the city.
Thank you, Oleg.
Thank you, Oleg. And if, if any of you want time with him or share your, what's working and what's not working, he's spending the month of December with everybody trying just to download history and what's working and what's not. So it's a gathering time, and then we'll put a six-month plan together, a one-year plan and a two-year plan. In January, we'll, we'll be working on that, or I'll be working on that with him. So thank you, Oleg. So the other, just, the point of sending this out is not to have to read it to you, but I wanted to point out just two other, three other things. One is Thursday's tabletop FEMA tabletop emergency exercise is huge for us. We have taken the entire calendar year at trying to prepare for that, from making sure that those that staff our ECC, our Emergency Command Center, that we have a pack, backpack with all the essentials for their spouses and their children so that they can actually come here. So we've, at some expense and some logistics, have made sure that the families of those that are going to be required to work long hours through an emergency are taken care of, and we've worked on training for everyone, on national FEMA training, et cetera. We have a, a lot of logistics I could go into, but the fact is that we're now, everything's set, it's taken a mo, a year, but we, we are now into practice mode, and from here on out, we just keep practicing because practice makes perfect, and you'll play how you practice. So thank you for, really, John is, John is here, and Mike has done a tremendous job. We have an emergency coordinator named Dennis, and then a large staff of folks to thank for that, but I, I wanted you to feel comfortable and know what, that the city is working hard. It's all coordinated with the county and through the fire district, and it's completely collaborative and whatnot. Second thing I wanted to point out, and several of you on council were a part of this, we concluded our state auditor's report from the auditor's office. They not only completed it, but then wanted to have an exit interview and sent, and we talked over a kind of a summary of their comprehensive report. Those of you that have the assignment to serve on the Finance Committee were there, and you heard just really glowing reports. They were basically speechless at how flawless and, and well-run our finance department and, and the city is run in that regard. And so kudos to you for serving on that committee and to, of course, Sue and her whole team and, and all those that tried to, you know, follow the financial policies and procedures. So we passed without any recommendation whatsoever. I also want to point out five C to you. Really grateful for the staffs. It's really Emily and Christina that have worked with the union to get us to, to consent on that agreement, and that was a big thing that came in late Thursday night, so very happy about that. And I won't talk much about eight A, but I'll point you to it. I think there'll be a lot more discussion on this, perhaps and probably a work session as well. We've often, you know, everybody's worried about utility rates and how those tend to increase. They, they have to as expenses, it's a pass-through. We just try to make sure we're accounting for our costs accurately, and we've typically always passed that out to consultants, and there's now software available for us to do that work inside, and it's working very well, and we're doing some testing and some modeling right now, which will save us thousands of dollars and lots of time. So Public Works is very excited about it. Finance Department's very excited about it. We'll spend some time with you because we just completed that last year of council, the previous council's commitment to incremental steps each year, which is a lot easier than the 17% that some of our other cities have had to do to try to catch up. So we are, we're a firm believer in incremental approaches, and so the software will help us do that and, and verify all of the data points. So that's all I wanted to say, probably more than you wanted to hear, but any questions for anybody? Yes.
I just wanted to say that when, reading through that audit report, that's unbelievable, everything that you have to report on.
Yes.
And how people reacted to it and who was involved in this and that, I'm thinking, holy moly, thank you for doing all that.
Yeah, and we'll be posting that, that report, a summary of that report, as well as a PowerPoint of the conversation of the Zoom meeting we had with the state auditor, so all that will be publicly available. It's, it is really something, a great win for the city, but she does this year after year, so we're getting used to it, but never, but don't want to underappreciate the effort that, yeah, that allows us to come out so well. Any other questions?
On your point too, with the survey, business survey, how many, what's the total population? What are we looking at that we hope to get 50 of?
Oh, did we send 1,500 of those out? Barb might be on. I think we sent 1,500 of them out. It included kind of all different businesses, including home businesses and whatnot. We're, we were told by the vendor, businesses don't usually slow down for this. It's not like the resident survey is hard to get the N high enough to be statistically significant, or aiming for 50 or 60. Thank goodness the chamber is partnering with us, and they're putting it in their newsletter and pushing it out. The vendor themselves are calling the businesses, asking them to do it, and we have a QR code. If they don't want to do it on paper, they can do it at home or on their phone or whatever. So we're continuing to push that. We don't have a deadline until we get to a number. It's a busy season, dark, rainy, whatever, but we'll, we'll continue to push and try to get to a decent N, so.
Just following that, is similar to the resident one, is it bounded by strictly city limits, or are we talking about people that are impacted by the city's decisions?
That's a good question. I think like the city one, they could pick, they could pick the residents, so we could slice it either way, yeah.
And are you surveying all the businesses, all the big box stores, all the little ones?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. I really hope that it's a, that the responses are a good representation of all the various types.
And they, you know, of course, they check the boxes of what are they? Are they a storefront? Are they retail? What type of retail? You know, how many employees, what they're, I think we ask them our revenue numbers, so we know how big or small they are, and then we'll be able to slice and dice our data based on some of those demographics, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
I had a quick question about that too, the surveys. Sorry if I missed it. Were they pushed out in physical letters or emails?
Yes, physical letters to everybody, and with their, they can take them online as well, and I, I'm trying to remember where we put that. I think it's, is it in our newsletter or on our website? But there's QR codes that jump them right into that, so.
Great. I was, I was worried if they were only sent in emails and then would go to people's like spam folders, that would be awful.
And Heather, I don't know if Barb's on there, or if you really want to even slow down to ask her, she might want to clarify. I hope I've, you know, correctly or accurately answered your question, but she is, she is slightly closer to it than I am, but I think I'm, I've answered correctly. Does she want to say anything or not?
Checking with her right now.
Okay. Anyway, I don't, don't want to slow you all down, but yeah, we're really excited to do it. It's been a long time in do, in, in doing that. We get, we got our business, the businesses that we survey, all, of course, all comes from the State Department, I think it's revenue, that where all the business licenses are housed, and that's where they apply and whatnot, and so it's, you know, we just got ahold of that record and use that as our database.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Barb.
Hi. Yeah, just real quick, Matt did a great job of answering the questions, but in quick summary, I think it was about 1,400 businesses that the Department of Commerce has on record that has a City of Squim business endorsement that allows them to do business in the City of Squim. That doesn't mean that they're necessarily located here. Some businesses that are out of the area, you know, have to have a Squim business license to conduct business here, so it's a pretty broad reach. It does include all types of businesses, as Matt said, and it went out direct mail to all of those businesses, and then the folks at ETC are actually calling them, encouraging them to take it, and they can either take it over the phone, or we do have an online version that anybody can, that they can take. And let me see, we, it's been in our newsletter. I asked the chamber to help us push it out, and they did that again in their last newsletter. We've had some social media postings. We've been trying to get the word out in a variety of different ways.
Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome.
And thank you to the chamber for partnering. That's great.
They've been very excited about this all along. Beth, we partner with Beth in almost everything we do, so I appreciate chamber support.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah.
I had a question on the FEMA training. When I asked for the after-action report, so there's nine areas of improvement on there. There's only two corrective actions, and you know, like establishing a joint incident command is not something we can do ourselves. Is there a plan to address the other areas?
Yeah, and I, I haven't even seen the action, and we just did that Thursday afternoon. We did a quick survey of what did they think went right and wrong, mostly wrong, so we could put it, but we also have developed a survey that, because we didn't have time, everybody, it was a two-hour exercise, and it, and it was Thursday afternoon, and people would need to go home. So we have created a survey to get more in-depth responses from them. We'll compile all that, and our next, our next ECC, we have a monthly ECC meeting, will be aggregating.
ECC, emergency?
Emergency Command Center.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that will be, that's where we did the tabletop. It's our, our actual command center is next door, and so a lot of, a lot of work with tables, with, with charts, with all the AV, our pullouts or rollouts. So we have a lot of equipment to prepare and get ready for that. Anyway, that's all next door and, and easily to move if we have to go to guide call or whatever. So my guess is you have a version of the after-command, but not a comprehensive one yet, but one will be coming. And, and every exercise we do going forward, and we plan on two formal table tops in 25 with some mini pseudo-ones in between that won't be, you know, we're live, quite so serious, but, but still exercises.
Yeah, there's not a date on here. It just says to present, to current, March 17, 2020, to current.
March?
It was that COVID action after, after-action report.
Yeah, that was, that was a COVID, that's a very old one. So yeah, this is a table, so we got the two, the two scenarios from FEMA, and one was a windstorm that knocked, knocked down a bunch of things, and then the power went out. So we combined two table tops into one and kept making the scenario get worse and worse, and so.
I guess my question was just, are we going to address the other seven, six areas for improvement from the COVID action, after-action report, or is that rolled into the FEMA work?
I'm getting nods from, yeah, and FEMA didn't do this, is we just chose to use their case studies and as, because they're pre-done for us, but yes, I'm getting nods from John, who helps run that, so yes.
And I want to thank the city manager and Vicky for bringing that up, because I know that some of our trainings as council members are required, like OPMA and all that, all that fun stuff, but there is a four-hour FEMA training that Chief Hill had sent me that I was interested in taking in, and I just highly recommend it, just so everybody has the same knowledge of, you know, FEMA training. I just think that emergency stuff is really important.
And I'm grateful you brought that up. Our plan is to send a formal email with a link to that and then some, and how that works, and, you know, set up on your account and password and why and whatnot, so that's coming, but thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right, on to city council committee reports. Is there anything that anybody would like to report? Vicky?
I've had a change in my schedule, and I'm not able to make any NODC meetings anymore, so we want to trade that when we get to the assignments.
All right. So I didn't hear any for committee reports, so on to council committee assignments. And this was mainly, only, mostly to just make everybody aware that council committee assignments is coming up. We try to do it annually, just in case anybody's schedule changes. And if you enjoy all the committees that you're on, that's great too. Vicky, can you let me, or let us know the days and times?
It is the, well, it's on Thursdays.
The second.
Fourth Thursday. Seems like they meet more often than that, but yeah.
Which one?
Council. I have it ready. Monthly, the fourth Thursday from two to four.
North Olympic Development Council.
But they met last Thursday, so that was the first Thursday. So it, if they stuck with the fourth Thursday, I could do it.
That's frustrating. Is it just everybody's different schedules must not line up? Oh, that's frustrating. Okay. All right. So that's something to think about. I will likely be available on Thursdays, so I might be able to take that when we do committee assignments next month. But no promises. And anything else that anybody wanted to bring up for committee assignments? I love mine. So I won't be asking anyone to.
You carried it in. I didn't tell the Matt and Christine, but I'm retiring.
From what?
From the.
Do we get a say, do we get a say in that? Thank you.
Show me the money. It's Squim's turn to, to run the transit committee. It's Squim's turn to chair it, which means, and it's a two-hour meeting with prep work, because it's, you're a voting board member. So Rachel, you'll have to pick somebody to lean on.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a great group of people.
And which ones are you on, Kathy? Is it just the Clam Transit?
I'm, I'm the alternate on the healing center with Dan.
Okay.
I go if he can't go, if he asks me to. And I'm on the chamber. I'm the council rep on the chamber, but I don't even see that on the list. No, no, they changed it to 3:00 PM for that reason.
Okay. And I think that's, is that one of the optional ones? Because some are definitely required, but some are optional.
They've never had a, or they didn't remember ever having a council person before. That's another good group of people.
I would think so. I might be able to do that one too. I'm not sure yet, though. Okay. So something to think about, mull over. We've got a couple of weeks, or a few weeks, until our first meeting in January. Any other maybes, comments? Does everybody like their committees that they're on?
Yep. Love my committees. They're great.
Cool. Excellent.
Counsel, Branda did say that Mayor Janice said that he's happy with his committees and he'll stay with what, the ones that he's on.
Excellent. All right. Well, with that, is there anything else for open council discussion while we're on this section of the agenda? Go on once.
Just, perhaps, well, I mean, Kathy, if, do you want to, could you expand on it a little tiny bit? Because and I know that it's not officially in writing yet, but did you want to expand on that a little bit for everybody?
Expand on what? Would you like to know my shoe size, or?
Yeah, okay. You're, you're going to bring it back at the next council meeting, I imagine.
I don't, I honestly don't know what you're talking about.
Your retirement.
Oh, oh, no, I'm retiring. I was going to retire in April on my birthday, and I'm going to retire at the first, after the first meeting in January. I would like to spend more time with my brand-new granddaughter, who I baby, we've been babysitting twice a week, so. And she's a lot cuter than anybody else in this room. Can't compete with that, can you?
Aw. Wishing you all the best, Kathy. We, it, it did come up while we were having dinner before council meeting. So I said it then, and I, I mean it absolutely. You will be missed. Thank you very much for all that you've brought to the council and your leadership and your mentorship and all that. Thank you very much.
All righty. Anything else for open council discussion? I don't know, before I start tearing up. Okay. So for planning, we're moving on to the next section, planning. Our agenda planning meeting will be Tuesday, January 7th at 2 o'clock. Is anybody interested? I'll probably be there. I put it in my calendar this time, so I won't miss it. I missed the last one. I do. Okay. Dan, I think. Is that like a, like an 85%? Okay, awesome. All righty. And our next regular council meeting is January 13th. Everybody, please have a great time over the holidays. Please drive safe, and we'll see you next year. Motion to adjourn. Boom.